Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, January 14, 2019. Prior to the start of tonight's meeting, I'd like to ask any member of our audience who would like to speak to any item on tonight's agenda, or any item for that matter, not on the agenda, to get a speaker request form there in the back of the room, there in the foyer, and kindly give that to our city clerk Lynn Fazekas, and she'll get it up to me, and we'll try to get you on at the appropriate time. With that being said, I'd like to ask our city clerk to call the roll, please.
Jacobson.
Here.
Finukin.
Here.
Fagan.
Here.
Norrico.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. I'd like to ask our Seventh Ward Alderman, Tony Favor, to rise and lead us in tonight's pledge of allegiance. Tony?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Alderman Favor. Okay, our first item tonight on the agenda is to approve tonight's agenda. First of all, I would like to ask any of our aldermen if there are any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda. Alderman Fagan.
On the consent agenda, I would ask for items 10, 11, and 12, and that would be the tourism agreement, the chamber commerce agreement, and the D-CEDC agreement to be tabled, so that our new city manager can review for the amounts and expectations on those entities.
So you'd like to remove those from consideration tonight, table those for action at a later time?
Yes.
Do you have any idea when a later time might be?
I would assume probably next council meeting.
City Manager Nicholas, are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that require a second to table?
I beg your pardon?
Does that require a second to table?
Yes, please.
Yes, it does require a second to table.
Second.
Lynn?
I'm going to suggest, since tabling would add a step when you want to take it back off of the table, that we do a motion to postpone.
Oh, yes, we did that, I think, at last meeting on something.
All right, I'll make a motion to postpone items 10, 11, and 12 on the consent agenda.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman Fagan.
Is there, I'm sorry, is there a particular meeting date, or are we saying?
We can put that, I believe it's the 27th, is our thing?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, okay.
Table this to the 28th.
Postpone.
Postpone. Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved, who did that second?
I did.
It's been moved by Alderman Fagan, seconded by Alderman Norrico, that we postpone numbers 10, 11, and 12 under our consent agenda, and we move those for further consideration, or initial consideration, on January 28. Is that fairly clear?
Yes.
Roll call.
Finukin.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norrico.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Motion passes. Thank you. So, after having removed those three items from the consent agenda, and postponing those for consideration until January 28, is there now a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Finukin, seconded by Alderman Fagan. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norrico.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Finukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Motion passes, and the agenda is approved. Now we go into item D under your agenda, and that's public participation. This is an area on the agenda on which anyone can speak to an item on the agenda. We are going to be, over the next 30 days or so, modifying our ordinances to, in an attempt to tighten up our meetings and provide an atmosphere where we're still not here till 11:30 and midnight. In the past, what we've done is to allow folks to speak to an item not on the agenda early on in tonight's meeting, where you see it now, and then to wait until that item came up on the agenda to speak. What we'd like to do, and we can still do that tonight because we have not changed our ordinance, however, what I'd like to do is to start this evening with public participation, working in one of two ways. If anyone would like to speak to an item not on the agenda, or on the agenda tonight, so you don't have to wait until 9 o'clock, or whenever, we might still be here, we'd ask you to fill out a speaker request form, give it to Lynn Fazekas, and she'll get it to me. So, we have one person who would like to speak, and that is Mike Embry. And Mike, you prefer to speak now as opposed to when we get to your item, right?
Whichever's wants to meet.
Yeah, why don't you come on up?
Thank you, Mayor, Michael Embry, DeKalb. First, thank you, Mayor, for inviting me to speak tonight on special events and the possibility of what it could do for an economic impact and a positive image for the city of DeKalb. I've served with two national organizations on special events over the years, and I can see the long-term effect of what a positive event can bring to a community, both economically and both image-wise. Local events like the Easter Bunny, Santa, Halloween, local parades do not really bring a lot to a community, because too many communities do these things, and to grow those kind of activities, don't. Special events outside of that medium will bring a lot of effects. Local events are great for a feel-good attitude for the community, but it doesn't help the economics of our community. Having a city create a special event or special event activity is nothing new. In 1985, Mayor Sparrow created the first special events committee for the city of DeKalb, so we have already embraced that part of the growth. In 1981, and this is not a political statement, but Bernie Sanders ran for mayor of Vermont, I'm sorry, Burlington, Vermont, and when he took the role, the city was financially in problems. He and the city council created special events, and within two years, economically came out of that problem. So we do know special events is a major impact. On a national level, you can create an event that will bring both notoriety to a community and an economic impact. In 1989, the city of Norfolk, Virginia, created its first three-day art festival. It has now grown to a six-week art festival with an economic impact of $47 million to the city of Norfolk. Within the state of Illinois, we have over 1,500 special events that go on within our communities. Locally, Chief Lowery from Ottawa, Ottawa has hosted for the last seven years a Wine, Lobster, and Jazz Fest, which has attracted over 12,000 people on a weekend, with an economic impact between $400,000 and $500,000. And that's just a small-town community, so we can see that this has a lot of validity. Everyone has heard of the Naperville Rib Fest? Well, this is the last year for the Naperville Rib Fest. The reason is, it became so successful, the organizers have put it out to bid to other cities. So we can see what an economic impact can do as a project grows. Locally, many of us have been entertained by the local drum and blues corps show that we've had here in DeKalb for the past 35 years. I spoke to the council years ago about supporting this activity, and they say, "Well, it's not really that important." Well, we lost that drum corps show to two years, Toledo, because they gave the organizers a better deal. So these kind of events, once we get them and grow them, we want to keep them. And even today, we still have 6,000 people come to town for our drum and blues corps show. And Mr. Verbic works the show with me every year, and it's a major economic impact to all our restaurants. In fact, if you talk to any of the restaurants, hotels, they'll tell you it is the busiest weekend during the summer. Can special events make an impact in the community economically, image-wise? Absolutely. I've submitted for your review some of the ideas for events for 2019. Our first event, just to give you a couple, and I'm not going to go into details, but our first event will be a new festival called Blooms, Blues, and Blues. It's a hot air balloon, craft beer, and blues music festival, which Mayor Smith, you helped me organize last year, and the city manager put a kibosh on it, but it's ready to go at the DeKalb Airport, and it will be the first major hot air balloon festival of the season. So we'll have an arm up on a lot of other people. Our drum corps show is coming back next year. Our Kish Festival Parade will be back, which is starting to grow and have a lot of momentum. The Bacon Palooza Swine and Wine Fest will continue to grow. We're proposing a new food festival in September called October BBQ, which is a combination of an Oktoberfest and a barbecue fest, which is going to be fun, more than a traditional thing. And by the way, I get calls all the time, "Can we do a chili cook-off?" No, everybody does a chili cook-off. Everybody does a rib fest. We have to be unique and different and outside the box. We've also proposed to several people in the community a new Kringle Market in this fall, so we can start bringing people out here. That impact has been phenomenal for the city of Chicago. It's now in Wrigley Field, it's now in Naperville, and ironically, Chief, it's in Ottawa, Illinois. So we need to grab a hold of these things, so we can start bringing people to town. I know, is there any other question, Mayor, you'd like to have, or the council members?
No, not at this point, Mike. We simply appreciate you coming forward, and we will certainly take it under consideration. Thank you. We commend you for what you've done. I mentioned in the State of the City address, your success at the Music at the Mansion event on Elmwood House lawn, and your Kish Fest parade, and all the other things you've helped us out on, so we continue to look for your involvement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, I have nobody else indicated a desire to speak to us this evening under public participation. We now move forward to item E under Presentations, proudly DeKalb, recognition of the Antiglade North Revitalization Plan Task Force. I'd like to ask City Manager Bill Nicholas, along with Community Development Director Joellen Charlton, who are going to present this item. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. Just before I do, I thought I'd just add a little bit of background, as probably everyone in this room knows, in the fall of 2017, community engagement process began, and the principal goal was outlining the overall priorities and a cohesive vision for the revitalization of the Antiglade North area, and as the mayor said in his State of the City speech, we know as the acronym AGN area. Dedicated task force, some of whom are here tonight, all volunteers from any local organizations, businesses, taxing bodies, and private life, led public meetings and subcommittees through the year and into 2018. The result was the creation of a very detailed revitalization plan, and that plan was presented to the council in the fall of 2018, and is posted on our website here at the city. It's now my pleasure, along with Joellen Charlton, to present some certificates for those who are able to make it tonight. We will also be sending to those who weren't able to make it their certificates of appreciation.
I'm going to read out the names, and hopefully you can come up. Shake a few hands. Michelle Brinkus? Yeah, that got me. I don't need you.
And Michelle, if you'd just simply come down and start with Alderman Jacobson, who you know over there, and just let us give you the opportunity to say thank you. Give you the opportunity to hear us say that.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Michael Rubin.
Thank you.
Sally Riven.
Thanks, Mike.
Well, thanks.
Herb Rubin.
Thank you for your work.
We appreciate it.
We appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Bill Finukin.
Thank you.
Dave Jacobson.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for all you do.
Thanks, Michael.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dave.
Michael, appreciate your help.
Thanks for all your time.
Thank you for your time and help.
Did we listen?
We did, Mike Pitzlach.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Herb again, thank you.
I'm going to give you a chance to speak.
It'll be two and a half minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Pitzlach.
Through the ages.
Thanks, Mike.
Mike, thank you.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Anybody else? If you've got anybody else, pretty good.
How about Ratty LaFois?
Thank you.
Is that the city or the FBI?
And the Chair of the Antiglade North Task Force, which will be officially dissolved tonight, but then will be moving into the implementation stage. I just can't say enough until I turn it over to Herb about how much this plan has meant to me personally, as I appointed 30 folks a year ago this past September, and I'm real proud of your efforts. Herb Rubin.
Shall I give my two and a half minutes?
No.
I'm keeping the optimism the mayor's, you know, put forth during the State of the City address. First of all, thank you very much for this recognition. Okay, the preparation of the Antiglade North plan is an important first step in the revitalization process. What has happened during this first stage, during this first year, bodes very well for the future. First, a very diverse group of DeKalb citizens with shared concerns about the city's future worked together to produce a report containing ideas for projects and programs that can't be implemented. Put simply, we succeeded, you know, producing the report. Secondly, the plan commission and the city council have actually read and provided strong support for the report, as have the upper administration of the university. Third, the city staff have already begun to carry out ideas contained in the report. Fourth, the members of the task force are on their own and then in small groups, working to carry out ideas implicit or explicit in the report, and once we are dissolved, we're going to do more of it, because then we can legally meet and talk about these things without having to do all the OMA stuff. And we're going to be having those meetings. Okay. To sustain the effort, I think four more steps are immediately required, some of which are already underway. One, the city staff should maintain as a high priority their work to revitalize Antiglade North. Secondly, volunteer efforts involving both members of the task force, as well as permanent residents of DeKalb, and in addition with university students, should be encouraged. Third, an independent, not-for-profit agency with a board consisting of community members, businesses and banks, clergy, university, and city representatives is needed to guide the long-term work required to fully implement the plan. And the plan is not going to be accomplished by tomorrow, or within the next year or two. It is really a decades-long plan. And finally, residents and businesses in the Antiglade North areas need to increase their efforts to take ownership in the revitalization effort, with an important first step being the formation of effective neighborhood and tenants associations. Again, thank you for the presentation, and thank you, council, for the support that you've given, and equally important, thank you for paying attention to it in detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Herb. Moving right along, we have item F now, which is the appointment of Joyce Stupedia as Third Ward Alderman until her successor qualifies and takes office. I'd entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Joyce Stupedia.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Norrico, seconded by Alderman Finukin, that we approve this appointment. Any other discussion? Before we take a vote, I'd like to indicate to folks that the procedure to appoint Joyce was not an easy one, but it was easy in the sense that we just didn't have a lot of folks knocking down my door to fill a position that will be virtually a three- or four-month assignment. Joyce has considerable experience, former city president, village president of Villa Park, considerable experience in committee work. She has served over the last year on our police pension board here in DeKalb, and she has indicated a tremendous interest in learning more about the ward that she will be serving over the next eight to 10 meetings. So, we've had a motion on the floor, we have a second to the motion. Roll call, please.
Norrico.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Finukin.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norrico.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item H on the agenda, public hearings. We will now open this public hearing at 6:28 PM. I'm going to read the title in its entirety, "Public Hearing for a Substantial Amendment to the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Five-Year Consolidated Plan, 2015 to 2019, An Amendment of the 2018 CDBG Annual Action Plan, One Year Use of Funds." I'm going to let City Manager Nicholas speak to this item, after which we'll see if anyone wants to speak at this public hearing. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to set a little bit of context here for the members of the audience and the viewing public, as well as the council. The Community Development Block Grant Program, which we have shortened to CDBG, receives federal funds through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. As I say in my background, the general federal objectives have very long been, over many decades, the provision of decent, affordable housing that is available, accessible, and sustainable. As a city with the largest population in the county, DeKalb qualifies as DeKalb County CDBG community. The allocation of annual CDBG funds is significantly regulated by HUD guidelines. We are going through a process tonight, which is part of those guidelines. One of the requirements is that the city of DeKalb adopt periodically a five-year consolidated plan. That plan may be amended, as we're proposing to do tonight, but to do that, we have to go through a number of hurdles and substantial public comment periods. What is specifically before you tonight is an That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Alderman.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Alderman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.[221.12][221.12](APPLAUSE).
Joyce, come on up.
Oh, you got that? Okay. Thank you. Please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay. Over the past week, Joyce and I have had a couple of discussions presuming that we would swear her in tonight, and she's very cognizant of the fact that there may be some issues on the agenda tonight, that she just doesn't feel comfortable in voting yes or no on, and so she will abstain during those times. Is that a fair assumption, Joyce, of where we are?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. So, as we move along, if Joyce simply abstains, I think you'll understand why. So, welcome to Joyce Stupija as our Third Ward Alderman, and as you know, we'll be having an election in April, and we'll have, we'll see a new person in, for the Third Ward seat in May. Now, we come to the consent agenda. If you recall, we have removed three items from the consent agenda, those items which were listed as numbers 10, 11, and 12. So, we have the remaining agenda items. These will be approved in omnibus form in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of any of these items unless requested by a council member. I take it that there is no further action needed on any of the items individually, so I would move for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I have a question.
Yes. Alderman Stupija.
On the accounts payable, just a small question. We have temporary services. I'm not quite sure what temporary services mean.
I couldn't hear that, Alderman.
We have temporary services. I'm not quite sure what we mean by temporary services.
These are part-time employees who are working for specific periods of time, but they may be removed at will.
So, thank you.
Any further discussion? We've had a motion on the floor, or have we had a motion on the floor? Okay. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Stupija, seconded by Alderman Fagan. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norrico.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item H on the agenda, public hearings. We will now open this public hearing at 6:28 PM. I'm going to read the title in its entirety. Public Hearing for a Substantial Amendment to the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Five-Year Consolidated Plan, 2015 to 2019, and Amendment of the 2018 CDBG Annual Action Plan, One-Year Use of Funds. I'm going to let City Manager Nicholas speak to this item, after which we'll see if anyone wants to speak at this public hearing. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to set a little bit of context here for the members of the audience and the viewing public, as well as the council. The Community Development Block Grant Program, which we have shortened to CDBG, receives federal funds through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. As I say in my background, the general federal objectives have very long been, over many decades, the provision of decent, affordable housing that is available, accessible, and sustainable. As a city with the largest population in the county, DeKalb qualifies as DeKalb County CDBG community. The allocation of annual CDBG funds is significantly regulated by HUD guidelines. We are going through a process tonight, which is part of those guidelines. One of the requirements is that the city of DeKalb adopt periodically a five-year consolidated plan. That plan may be amended, as we're proposing to do tonight, but to do that, we have to go through a number of hurdles and substantial public comment periods. What is specifically before you tonight is an amendment to that five-year consolidated plan that reapportion's money within the budget for this program year to meet changing needs. There is a more lengthy background that was attached to your agenda tonight, and I trust that you have seen that that is satisfactory in explaining that, but if not, I would just say, in general, without specific reference to that chart that was in the background, that this amendment would authorize deferred public improvements on Harvey, Tyler, and Charter Streets, which includes sidewalk replacement to allow for accessible pathways. The sidewalks in that area are particularly broken up. In addition, there is a new demolition line item that is proposed as part of this amendment. There's another amendment which restructures the private property rehab program to allow for larger loans. The current limit is 5,000. This would be raised to 15,000. Something to note, loans up to 5,000, according to HUD guidelines, may be forgivable. Loans between 5,000 and $1 and 15,000 would be repayable and secured by a lien on the property that's due and payable when the property is sold, foreclosed, et cetera. As I mentioned, we have satisfied the public comment requirements. I have highlighted the general provisions that are proposed before you tonight. We are happy to answer any questions you may have.
This is a public hearing, and City Council will take action on this at a later point in the agenda tonight. Are there any, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak during this public hearing on this proposed amendment? If not, I will close this public hearing, closed at 6:32. Moving forward on our City Council agenda, there are no items under considerations. There are now a number of resolutions, and the first one is Resolution 2019-006, approving an employment agreement for the city manager. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Fagan, that we approve the employment agreement for the city manager. Any further discussion? Obviously, I'm not going to ask Bill to make a comment on this, but as you know, the City Council appointed Mr. Nicholas to the position of city manager on December 18 by a vote of six to one, and there is a resolution in the background material on the website that identifies the terms and conditions of his employment. I will say this, that we were very fortunate to find a city manager of Bill Nicholas's caliber, and at no time during the few days following his appointment and working through the terms of this agreement did we have any significant substantial disagreements. Bill is here because Bill Nicholas wants to be here, and, Bill, I look forward now as we vote on this employment agreement. We appreciate your willingness to work with the City Council and with the city attorney in helping us to formulate this employment agreement. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norrico.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving right along, Resolution Number Two, under J. 2019-007, authorizing a retail tobacco store license for Aromas Incorporated, 811 West Lincoln Highway. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. Any further discussion? Bill, would you like to speak to this item?
Just to say, Mayor, that, as I said in the background, state law and City Council both touch on this item. What's before the council is essentially a license renewal, but there's a change in ownership that also prompts your review tonight. Your support is recommended. There is some substantial background from Attorney Frieders, and I'm sure he could answer any specific questions, but there's also a license renewal fee of $3,511, which is also part of this resolution.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norrico.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Motion passes. Thank you. Number three, Resolution 2019-008, concurrence and support for a permit from the Illinois Department of Transportation authorizing Pizza Hut to proceed with work to reconstruct the commercial entrance at 701 West Lincoln Highway. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Norrico. Bill, would you like to speak to this item?
Just that, this is a entrance which is part of a right-of-way that is controlled and managed by the state of Illinois, and as often the case, there has to be concurrence between the state of Illinois and the city of DeKalb for work that's going to be done in the right-of-way, the shared right-of-way. Oftentimes, we were asking for the state for their concurrence. It's the other way around tonight. They're asking for ours, so we recommend that concurrence.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norrico.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, now we go to item number four, and this was the item towards which we had the public hearing a few minutes ago. Resolution 2019-009, approving a substantial amendment to the Community Development Block Grant Five-Year Consolidated Plan, 2015 to 2019, and an amendment to the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan, One-Year Use of Funds for Program Year 25, April 1, 2018 to March 31, 2019. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Norrico, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. Bill, we did have a public hearing on this. Would you like to speak to any more additional information?
You know, I'll stand by the remarks that I gave earlier. Our community development director, Joellen Charlton, may, do you have anything you want to add?
No, thank you. You covered it well.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norrico.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. Number five, Resolution 2019-010, authorizing the city manager to approve or ratify a tax increment financing district audit agreement and related agreements within budgeted sums. Motion.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fagan, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas, any comments on this item?
Yes, it's a really practical matter. As the mayor mentioned in the state of the city remarks, the council has pledged to support a forensic audit of our TIF funds, which would be managed by the state's attorney, Rick Amato. Talking to Rick about a week ago and subsequently to our city attorney, it occurred to me that at some point, whoever's going to respond to this RFP is going to wonder who pays, and we have already identified that the city of DeKalb will pay from one of two funds, TIF Fund and TIF II. Both have budgeted $100,000 to that purpose. We don't know at this point what that will be. We also don't know what the paper trail is going to be, but certainly, to continue to hold to our audit requirements, both for the TIF Fund and all city funds, there has to be a paper trail. There's going to have to be signatures on something, and I am the chief financial officer and a chief law enforcement official. I think I should be able to sign, so we're proposing that I have that latitude, as long as it's within the dollar amounts that the council has allocated, and naturally, I would be keeping the council and the general public informed of the progress of this audit.
Yeah, I think that's important, that we be as transparent as possible, given the fact that we had what we went through with the JRB and the questions for a forensic audit, so. Any further comment on that? Roll call.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norrico.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item number six, Resolution 2019-011, authorizing a settlement agreement with Molly Talkington. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Favor, and, Bill, I know you'd like to speak to this item.
I would, especially because when we were preparing the agenda and getting that out by the end of the day on Thursday, we had not achieved the settlement that we were looking for. We have an item on the agenda, as you know. We did not have the full terms, agreed terms of the settlement, so what I'd like to do for the people in the audience tonight, for those who are listening and for the council, is to walk through what the terms of the settlement are, also for our friends in the media. I should say that we have checked with, in terms of the Open Meetings Act, we have checked with the authorities available to us, and have found that so long as we walk the viewing public and the participating public here tonight through this in detail, we have complied with the Open Meetings Act. So, I'm going to take a few minutes. The council has before you what is, maybe, Jeff, we can, yeah, increase that a little bit so people can read it. You have the full terms of the settlement agreement that is proposed as this agenda item. I have highlighted the areas of particular public interest. According to the terms of the settlement, the city will continue to pay Ms. Talkington her normal bi-weekly salary, including car allowance, at the rate she earned as a finance director as of January 6 of this year. I have noted in that highlighted area what that payment is. The payments will be issued, but of course, less all taxes withholding, employment, pension contributions, health insurance premiums, and the like. Those withholdings are separately considered. The payroll payments will continue for six months, from January 7, 2019, until July 7, Ms. Talkington will also be allowed to remain on the city's group health and dental insurance plan, and there's some detail about what that cost is. If you'd like, I can read all the details as well. Would you prefer that I do? Okay. Here, I see more people going like this. Okay. There is also an obligation on the part of the city to pay for the hours that have been accrued in terms of unused vacation leave. There's a total gross value of $7,161.91, and that total payment would be issued on her next regularly scheduled paycheck if she, and she has accepted this agreement. No additional benefit time will be accrued. It should be pointed out that this is a severance. Ms. Talkington is, will no longer be in a position of authority with the city of DeKalb pending the council's approval. The city was also obligated, as part of this agreement, to issue a letter of reference. That letter of reference is attached. Before I get to that, I should mention that, as the council is well aware, there is a question of an EEOC and Illinois Department of Human Rights charge that had been filed. Ms. Talkington agrees to voluntarily withdraw her charges of discrimination, which have been docketed, and the numbers are on page four of the settlement agreement, and has acknowledged that she does not wish to pursue those charges any further. With respect to the letter, that is noted as Appendix B. That letter would come over my signature. As Ms. Talkington is looking for new employment, persons who are looking to follow up on a reference would contact our HR department, but this letter would be made available to I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions regarding this severance agreement? My only comment is, I would hope that the council would agree with me that this is a very transparent undertaking, and I commend our new city manager in not only putting the finishing touches and helping the city putting the finishing touches, along with Dean Frieders, on this agreement, but to share this in a way that, to me, it is complete transparency, and I appreciate that, and I hope that the citizens of the city of DeKalb would agree with that stance. There being no further discussion, roll call, please.
Norrico.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Abstain.
Fagan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Six I.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now, we go into ordinances. K. Number one, Ordinance 2019-001, prohibiting the use of groundwater as a potable water supply by the installation or use of potable water supply wells or by any other method at 421 Grove Street. This is first reading. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Stupija. Bill, if you'd like to speak to this item, please.
Yes, there's some substantial background, but it boils down to this. There has been, for a number of years, remediation going on on the site at 421 Grove Street, which is formerly known as Sawyer Motors and had other tenants. This ordinance is just simply the last step in that orderly process. To obtain an IEPA letter requiring no further remediation, the city needs to ban the use of any groundwater wells that could be used for sprinkling and so forth on the property, and we recommend your approval to finish this process.
Any further discussion on this? Roll call.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norrico.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is there interest in waiving second reading? Move to approve and waive second reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Motion carries. Number two, Ordinance 2019-002, authorizing a zoning map amendment from the high, heavy industrial district to PD-1 planned development industrial district, and approval of a planned development preliminary plan for a community solar garden to be located along the north side of Gerler Road approximately 500 feet east of South First Street. This is by Sunvest Solar, Inc. This is first reading. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Fagan, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Roll call.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbig.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Motion carries. Number two, Ordinance 2019-002, authorizing a zoning map amendment from the high, heavy industrial district to PD-1 planned development industrial district, and approval of a planned development preliminary plan for a community solar garden to be located along the north side of Gerler Road approximately 500 feet east of South First Street. This is by Sunvest Solar, Inc. This is first reading. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Stupija, seconded by Alderman Noriko, and City Manager Nicholas, if you'd make a comment on this item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is more layered, and there is a, we had projection of the area at Gerler and South First. Also, I would note that, I believe in our audience tonight, is petitioner Bill French from Sunvest. Is Bill here? Yes, hi, Bill, who would also be available to answer any questions you may have. What's proposed by the petitioner is to install a 2-megawatt community solar garden on two of the three lots on this overall site. The total's about 36-plus acres. These, as I mentioned in the background, these solar panels would be fixed on some tilt racks. They would be supported on piles that are driven eight to 10 feet in the ground. The panels would be obviously oriented south. That would be the first test, I believe, Bill. And there would be, for obvious reasons, the need for a fence around this, not only to keep people bent on mischief out, but to keep animals who don't know the difference between mischief and non-out as well. One of the things that we have taken pride on as we've developed out on the periphery of our development area is that we are looking for ways to extend our utilities, and in this instance, there is information in the development agreement which binds the developer, Mr. French, as the petitioner and his company, to contribute 50% of the cost of any future water main extension through this area, and that, although a very substantial and a meaningful commitment, does pose the question about how would this commitment be secured. And I appreciate Alderman Fagan touching on this with me in the last week. Subsequent to the writing of this agenda, we received a commitment that would be in the form of an addition to this development agreement, and I believe there is something at each of your desks at the top.
Yes.
It shows a small "B" and it starts "prior to approval." May as well just read that for you. "Prior to approval of the final plat, the owner shall post a letter of credit in form and content acceptable to the community development director, securing the entirety of the water main contribution contemplated in article, et cetera." So we appreciate the concurrence of Mr. French and his company in that. This will also be an area. One of the three lots is going to be available for future industrial development of some sort that would be a use that would come back before the plan commission and before the council. So we feel this is something that is of value. It's certainly a renewable kind of energy that we're looking for, and we appreciate the initiative. The plan commission did as well. With one commissioner absent, the commission voted five to zero to recommend the city council's approval of the various items that are identified in this background, and we recommend the council's approval of the plan commission recommendation.
It's been moved and seconded, and now we are open then up for further discussion. Alderman Noriko.
I have a general question. Since this is the second solar project in the last several months, are we likely to be seeing more of these, and if so, are there, you know, any concerns related to that? It certainly seems good to have increased development and so forth, but...
Because I'm just catching up on this, I'm going to defer to our principal planner, Dan Olson, to see what he has to add to that.
Yeah, the other solar project we did see earlier was actually in the county, and we did have some influence because it was near our border. There's no other projected solar projects yet in the city. I know DeKalb County has seen quite a few projects through the county. I think 30-plus have come through their process. As with this one and a lot of the others, there is a state process for approval. So the applicant is waiting for approval from the state on this, you know, to go forward or not, but at this time, there's no other project in front of the city at this time in terms of any zoning changes at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So Planning Commission has approved this. We are asked to be, to approve it tonight on first reading. Does it then need to go to a second reading?
Yeah.
And then it needs to go to a state for state approval?
Yeah, there's a second reading request. The applicant's requested waiver of that, and then they'll submit and wait for approval from the state.
Okay, so there is a request for second reading tonight.
Yes.
From this city council.
Mayor, may I just add?
Yes.
If the council chooses to approve tonight or on the 28th, it should do so with the condition that I read with respect to the letter of credit.
Yes, right, okay. That would be part and parcel of that. Okay. Alderman Fagan.
In regard to the waiver of second, I'd like to suggest we hold off on that. This is not something we're just capping off a well. This is something that'd be interested in people that are in the neighborhood that might not know about it, that might want to come about and be pro or against.
Okay. After hearing that, I do not hear anyone who is moving to waive second reading. We do have a motion on the floor and a second to approve this on first reading with the provision that we include this addendum item that City Manager Nicholas included. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbig.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Motion passes. So just for an item going forward, Pat, do you feel that between now and the next meeting is, gives us adequate time?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that if we were to bring this back for second reading, City Manager Nicholas, we would be in a position to consider the approval of this ordinance?
We'll bring it back on the 28th.
Thank you. Okay, number three, Ordinance number 2019-003, authorizing amendments to ordinances 1998-037 and 1998-038 to allow for additions and renovations to the DeKalb County Rehab and Nursing Center at 2600 North Annie Glidden Road. First reading, motion, please.
So moved.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Stupija, and Bill, if you would speak to this item, please.
Yes, Mayor. The County of DeKalb is proposing to add oh, about 21 and a half thousand, 21,000 square feet roughly to their complex off of Annie Glidden Road. In the audience tonight is John Heimbach, who is an architect with Larson and Darby Group, who's been working on this and is happy to answer any questions you may have. I'll just lay this out very briefly. The two different projects are these. One is to connect the east end of the administration building with a new addition that would toll about 15,400 square feet. This would add some transitional care for inpatient rehabilitation. There's another piece which would construct 6,100 square feet of a multipurpose activity center in the center court of the existing nursing home facility that would provide more diverse activities, including some casual dining and seasonal events. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this on December 19th and unanimously recommended the council's approval. In this instance, because the county is hoping to get going on the project, which will still need some preliminary work, we would like to recommend that the council, in addition to approving the plan commission recommendation, also approve a second reading on this item.
Any further discussion, or does anyone wish to make the motion to waive second reading and approve this ordinance?
We have to pass it first. We have to pass it first.
Oh, okay, right. We have to pass it first. Good man. Roll call, please.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbig.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Motion passes.
I'd like to move to approve and waive second reading.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken.
Second.
And seconded by Alderman Favor, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Stupija.
Second.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbig.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Motion passes as ordinance passes then. Number four, Ordinance 2019-004, authorizing amendments to ordinances 2002-045 and 2002-046 to add permitted and special uses, amend the sign regulations, and approve a plat of re-subdivision for the Northland Plaza Shopping Center on Sycamore Road. This is first reading. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Stupija. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. This has three parts, as I noted in my background report, and each received some considerable attention from the Plan Commission back in December. The first proposes revisions to the original ordinance that approved the redevelopment of Northland Plaza. That was back in 2002. These revisions allow for a limited number of non-retail uses at the shopping centers. You know, there's been sort of a creeping amount of new uses over the years that have not been literally retail uses, and that seems to be the trend in that part of the strip of retail along Sycamore Road. This would also, this particular revision would also eliminate an allowance for monument signs, shorter signs that back in the day were thought to be the cutting edge for indicating a restaurant or any one of the various pads in a larger subdivision, retail subdivision. The problem is those signs are often overlooked as people are driving in and looking around, and parking tends to obscure them in trees and so forth. So it was proposed that, by the developer, also considered by the Plan Commission, that that allowance be removed from the original ordinance. A second piece to this is a revision to allow the original special use, allowing for an additional pylon sign along Sycamore Road at the entrance near Ake Haven. This, so this would be a second pylon sign. There's one right now at the main entrance, and this would be a second pylon sign. The third was the approval of a plat of re-subdivision to allow for a fitness center in the northern portion of the former Carson's Department Store, and that requires also an amendment to the 2002 ordinance, which approved the final plan and plat for Northland Plaza. So there are three pieces of this. One deals with allowing non-retail uses and eliminating small monument signs, but they still could be added, I believe. Dan, is that correct, or it just removes the requirement for those?
Yeah, the smaller signs, monument signs for each of these pads would be removed, but it does allow for, there's an existing smaller monument sign at the south entrance to the site. That would be remained, and the language covers that sign to continue.
Second pylon sign is the second piece, and the third piece is to allow for the cutting up basically re-subdividing of the old Carson's store. The Plan Commission considered all three pieces and listened to considerable amount of information from our staff and some from the public, and voted unanimously back in December to recommend the council's approval.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded already that we approve first reading of this ordinance. Roll call.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbig.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Motion passes. City Manager Nicholas, is there any need to consider waiver of second reading on this?
We can bring it back on the 28th.
Bring it back on the 28th? Okay, great.
They have requested waiver. We did get a letter requesting waiver of second reading from the applicant.
Motion to waive second reading and approve?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbig, seconded by Alderman Fanouken, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Bill, any objection to that?
No.
Roll call.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbig.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Ordinance number five, excuse me, number five, Ordinance 2019-005, authorizing a special use permit for a vehicle service facility at 1806 Sycamore Road. First reading, entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Noriko, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe the petitioner, Mr. Mendoza, is in the audience tonight. He has petitioned for a special use permit, as is required in our UDO for what is known as a vehicle service facility. There has been a vehicle service facility at this exact location in this particular subdivision since its redevelopment, and the proposal is not to expand the footprint of the building, but to allow for a slightly different type of vehicle service that would involve some minor repairs to passenger cars and trucks, not semis, and so forth. No body repair or mechanical overhauling. The petitioner has indicated that some inoperable vehicles might be towed there and lined up basically for work in his shop. The Plan Commission heard some testimony from Steve Irving, who has his construction office just east of there, and he was not against the proposed special use, but did ask for... And he was not against the proposed special use, but did ask for some conditions on the exterior stacking and, and storage of vehicles. And specifically, what he asked for, the, the Plan Commission voted to recommend to you specifically, no more than five vehicles might be parked on the site overnight, that the repair work had to be conducted indoors, as was the case with the previous use, so can't have a couple people working on tires and so forth outside. That the parking area would be seal coated. It's in some disrepair now, within 120 days of the approval of the special use. And that that seal coating would be striped, and a handicap sign would be installed, which is part of our ordinance requirement for the special use before that, that use becomes effective. The Plan Commission recommended, as I said, and we asked that the council approve this on first and second reading tonight.
Thank you, Bill. Any further discussion?
Question.
Alderman Fanoukian.
So you mentioned a handicap sign. Is that a parking handicap sign?
Yes.
For access to the building?
Parking, I'm sorry, I should've said.
Parking, thank you.
Parking, yes.
Any further, Alderman Stupija.
Yeah, could it be considered, is there a way to include wording so that the five damaged cars can't be left there long-term? That's one thing I was thinking about. The other was possible wording that no more than one unlicensed vehicle may be stored overnight.
The city attorney has whispered to me, I'm still getting up to speed on all the ordinance conditions. There is a condition that they cannot be stored for more than 10 days.
Not more than 10?
Yes. And so in this case, it would be an ordinance restriction on more, no more than 10 days, and a special use provision that said it can't be more than five cars in question.
Okay. And the unlicensed?
It's not, it's not included in the special use provision.
The applicant, I think Mr. Miguel's father just came in to be the operator, and they did indicate during the initial staff review and through the commission that they won't, they don't plan on any unlicensed vehicles being brought to the site. Is that correct?
So it would be agreeable, then, to prohibit unlicensed vehicles?
Yes.
Okay. So the council can add that condition, if you like.
I would like to see that.
Second.
Do we need to vote on the additional information? Should we amend approving this ordinance to include the change requested by Alderman Stupija?
Yes, we'd request a vote on the amendment first.
Okay.
Question, though, on that. I assume that if an unlicensed vehicle were to be there, it would still be subject to the 10-day requirement, though, correct? Or limitation, I guess.
Correct, and we also have other nuisance ordinances that may come into play if it's there longer than that.
So, we are gonna vote, first of all, on the amendment, as moved by Alderman Stupija and seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any further discussion on the amendment? Roll call.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor. Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanoukian.
No.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Six I.
The amendment passes. Now, we are going to vote on the motion as amended. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanoukian.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor. Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Eight I.
Motion passes. Is there a request for waiver of second reading on this?
Move to approve and waive second reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanoukian, seconded by Alderman Favor, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanoukian.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. Unless there is any indication otherwise, we are now at the final item on our agenda tonight, and that's reports and communications. This is where we ask each of the council members if they have anything to report or communicate, and concluding with City Manager Nicholas. First of all, Alderman Dave Jacobson.
No report.
Alderman Fanoukian.
I would just like to welcome our new City Manager Bill and our new Alderman Joyce to our team.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Alderman Stupija.
Well, I would certainly like to say thank you to our mayor for taking the time and considering me for this temporary position. And I'd also like to thank the council for accepting me. And I will obviously do the best I can.
Thank you. Alderman Fagan.
I'd also like to welcome our new City Manager, our new City Council member. And I just want to point out, it is 20 after 7:00. And that's pretty darn remarkable. And that's my report.
Alderman, Alderman Noriko.
Well, I'm thrilled to have another diverse face on the council. And so, welcome to Alderman Stupija.
Thank you.
And, you know, welcome to City Manager Nicholas, even though he's not a diverse face, he's very welcome. And, and I also want to echo comments about the Antiglen North Project. It's a wonderful example of many people in this community coming together. And I want to put my voice in and forward, and as loudly as I can, that we on the council continue to support the efforts. It's, it's a wonderful document, but it needs to be more than just a document. It needs to be studied and enacted. And so whatever I can do personally to help that effort, whatever the council can do and the city can do, because it's an area that's well-deserving of continued attention and efforts.
Thank you, Kate. Alderman Verbic.
No report.
Alderman Favor.
I just wanted to, I guess, give a, a safety warning this morning while driving to work while it was early morning, about 6:30. I had a deer run across in front of my car this morning, and didn't hit it, so I was fortunate enough. But just a warning that in the early hours, if you're commuting while it's still the winter time, there are a lot of animals out, out there. So just be careful, keep your eyes open, look out for the runners as well.
Yeah, we don't want to get stepped either.
Thank you. Just a couple of very quick items from me tonight. One is I hope that you can see what we have tried to do here over the last several weeks to tighten up the time of our meetings. And hopefully, the public will be very, very, they will buy into the idea of, of allowing folks to speak to any item, any item that's either on the agenda or not early on in the meeting, which will negate the necessity for them to, to discuss the item when it, we have it on the agenda. Also, Bill Nicholas has hit the ground running in many, many respects. One of those is to change the tenor of our agenda items. And Bill, I appreciate your manager's summary. That really is helpful. And I also appreciate the fact that you have indicated to me and to this city council that you fully expect to be in the position to where you can speak intelligently at each and every meeting about what our cadre of department heads are doing. And towards that end, you are going to be responding to many of the items, as we have done tonight. And I think it worked fairly well, and I appreciate that. My final comment is, I'm gonna reread the first sentence of my State of the City address tonight. Some of you may have missed that. And it was simply this, "2019 is going to be a better year. I can just feel it." I have nothing else to report. Alderman Fazikas, or, excuse me, City Clerk Fazikas.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Clerk Ruth Scott, who goes above and beyond, I believe, every single day of, of work here, has done something that's more visible, but you have to go to the city's website to see it. On the city clerk's page, she has assembled the released executive session meeting minutes. I believe this is the first for the city of DeKalb, and it represents a great effort. So now we have the executive session meeting minutes, ordinances and resolutions. The executive session's still in process, work in progress. And, but the minutes for 2003 through 2011 are, are all up there.
Wonderful. Thank you, Lynn, I appreciate that. Anything else?
No, thank, thanks.
Okay, and if not, our final report is from our new City Manager, Bill Nicholas. Bill, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'll second what the city clerk said about Ruth Scott. I find everything that she said to be true about Ruth. She's been very helpful to me. I want to thank the mayor and the council for your support, for welcoming me, for working with me in, in recent weeks. And I also want to thank our professional staff, who have been working with me very hard and educating me on a lot of topics and a lot of background, which I was able to bring to items tonight. I will promise you, I, I thank the mayor for saying that I'm going to try to bring an executive summary on these points that would maybe help the audience and the public and the council, but I am not going to be reluctant, as you've seen tonight, to call on those staffers who have done, in particular, some work on a particular topic, and, and their, their wisdom and insights would be superior to mine. Finally, a, a very special thanks to Ray Munch. Ray has, until tonight, been acting in a capacity that has been of much service to this city. I only know a piece of all the things that he's done, but I have watched, I watched him in action a couple of meetings in December, and I am very grateful for his dedication, his steadfast perseverance through a lot of tough topics, and his, his service to the citizens of the city of DeKalb. Thank you, Ray.
Are there any other items for the good of the cause tonight? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting of the city council.
So moved.
Second that.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Stupija. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So moved, we are adjourned. Good night.